Welcome, members, to Village Board meeting of January 11, 2024. For since our first meeting of the year, we have the pleasure of regent in open silence on the passing of Donald Hunter and Bruce Frank, may they all rest in peace. The legions. Okay, as I always do, when we begin a meeting, what's the matter?
It's connected. Back to a wireless display. Drop the connection, that's all, hang on, it's connecting. Nothing. There we go.
Success. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
As I always do, I begin by introducing your village board of trustees, starting at far end with trustee Jennifer. Next to him is trustee Victorelli. Next to him is trustee Sutariello. Next to her is trustee Matt Fabro. Right is deputy clerk. Jessica McHannon, nine, the mayor Andrew Jack Mott. So we begin tonight with these swear-ins, our nine, one of my best. Box for this meeting. Kind of your two waters.
Hi.
Hi.
You sound like a square that I support.
That sounds like a square that I support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
Constitution of the United States.
And then I'm beginning. To discharge the duties of members.
Just pick it up, maybe.
Supporting.
What I think I can do. Congratulations. He signed off. And the Jack. And so we have a guest. In the room that I would like to introduce, my lovely wife Shannon Jack Motta.
Take a spare name.
All who join us this evening is the town of Woodbury supervisor, still here, David Gianni. There you go. Now, I'm sitting on the back here behind. The top woman is Sandra Caprino Young, councilwoman Tricia Londo. And sitting with our consultants over there is chief of the Woodbury community, Chief Watson. Come and watch, you're welcome. Okay. Okay, we begin the meeting, the meeting this for your reorganization meeting. So at this time, I would like to appoint the position of deputy mayor, Mr. Vic Correlli. Congratulations, Vic.
Thank you.
All right, board liaisons, got motion accepted to establish the following liaison to the upper hooded people. Liaison to the town board. Andrew Jack Motta. Well, liaison to the zoning board, trustee Correlli. Liaison to the fire department, trustee Fryman. Liaison to the water steward department, trustee Correlli. Liaison to the housing department, trustee Fabro. Liaison to the building department, trustee Suriello. Liaison to the finance warrant castle watch, trustee Fabro. Liaison to the land preservation comp plan review, trustee James Fryman. Liaison to the Monroe River School District, trustee Suriello. Liaison to the Palm Wall Street School District, trustee Fryman. And a little bird suggested to me tonight to create the position of liaison to the Woodbury Police Department. So we myself and Vic Correlli. So can I have a motion and accept, or second, to accept all those liaison as ready?
No, discussion?
Well, I got a motion and a second first.
Yeah, a motion and a second.
Seconded now, discussion. Especially, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the uh. You have indicated your liaison, but in fact, per village law, you're ex officio to all of these uh bodies, and I would suggest that we have two trustees on each one. Uh, simply to spread the uh work, particularly where there's a lot of meetings involved. And I said, indicated I had recommended that, or requested that I be kind of associated with the planning board and the building department, uh since that's my background professionally and historically.
Ready?
Yes.
All right, I will take that under advisement. We have in the past years, we've always had a mayor and a trustee jointly serve liaisons to departments, so really this is just test practice for us. So um. I will move forward as such, in terms of the liaison, I gotta tell you, James, it's usually an honor to have the fire department be a liaison for the fire department. Uh, in the years past, I know that trustee Deputy Mayor Town Bureau was serving in that capacity. Deputy Mayor Jason Gomez and Deputy Mayor Tim Egan was there for multiple years, so. Um, I'm okay with what I set up here. So I've got a motion and a second, and I get a all in favor? I mean, yeah. Um, if that's the case, that we would have two trustees per position. We previously discussed possibly having an award reservation in conference review. Um, of appreciating names that liaison as well, as well as being a liaison as a town. I have, I really have this there, but I can't put you on with the land preservation. Okay, motion and second, can I get an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Nay. All right, three, two. Can I have a motion and second to appoint the following individuals to the following position? Fields officer of foils, myself, village clerk, Jessica McHannon, village treasurer, registrar, Benjamin Poppin, council Gary to the mayor, Carroll Bureau, chairman officer, Andrew Jack Motta, and diversity and inclusion consultant, Bernie Baker. But can I have a motion and seconds to approve those as ready? No?
Okay, I'll make a motion, but I don't.
Okay. Second. I'll make a second, discussion.
And Mr. Mayor, I've just passed down the definition of the particular area.
Steve? Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
That position.
Yes.
What authority does it have? Why is it on? On.
Council Gary to the mayor. Just an advisor.
Why do you have to vote on?
You don't really, I don't, it's on there, why don't you go on it? Well, this.
For now.
For now, yeah, okay.
Well, actually, it becomes a position in village government.
Would that be a question? I don't see a definition. If I could be part of the position.
I believe we'll be the only.
Actually, the entire board has been wanting to pay the trustee when she was on the board. What, what powers that position within the village? She's an advisor to the mayor. That's exactly, exactly. So there's nothing more than that.
Nothing more, no.
Exactly.
Finding her extension.
No, no.
But this not being a formal position, I'm sure you talk of many advisors. Unformal or.
Trust me, I don't think you speak up, you can't hear.
Sure, sure. I've been questioning the mayor as to why this is not an informal position, I'm sure he speaks with many folks who are at the village. Why does it have to be a formal position?
It's not necessarily a formal position, she's not being paid for the job, she's not, although I will get you a desk thing.
Not necessary.
Okay, see that, she's already saving his money. But it's not a formal position, it is a position I'm just creating. No. There's really much, not much to it. Maybe we're reading too much of this.
Yeah, well, the mayor, the definition is certainly merits your consideration, I think we'll be the first community to have such a person.
Well, we're not, Southland Road has a consigliere to the mayor. I could change the title to confidential advisor to the mayor.
Anything you want that's not this de- this definition, which is a person who serves as advisor or counselor, counselor to the leader of a criminal organization.
That's how we're both as a consigliere to the mayor.
Or someone such as a powerful political consultant who's being likened in some way to such an advantage.
Still will change it to confidential advisor to the mayor, how's that sound?
I can do that. As a non-paid position.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, yeah. My motion is second, the deputy mayor, the walk on the northern territory as attorney for the village.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Nay.
Nay. I have one explanation, but I don't think I want to know. Okay, my motion is second to adopt the following meeting procedure. At the village board, hold regular meetings on the fourth Thursday of each month at seven thirty. At village hall four five five, Route thirty-two, Haddon Mills, New York. If canceled notification will be given through media and post around the official signboard of the clerk. Stephanie is called by the mayor and all trustees will be notified by telephone, by telephone, in person, or by postal service by the clerk. At least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting, unless the meeting is between the mayor and where it is, and he can dictate the necessity of a shore notice. Then this will be prepared by the village mayor and clerk in the later than twenty-four hours prior to our meetings. Items can be added immediately during the meeting. Minutes of the meeting will be prepared by the village clerk in accordance with the open meetings law. When action is required, a motion, followed by a second, if we ask by the mayor, the discussion can then be held and then each member will vote promptly on issue. One vote per member. When required, the board will be polled by the village clerk. If there is a dispute as before or priority motions or other meeting procedural issues not set forth here, any rules of the knowledge of the bar. Consider the new law, this law will be attorney for the village acting as attorney. When all this is finalized, the meeting will be adjourned, and deviation from these procedures must be determined by the village. Okay, can I have a motion accepted to adopt the following meeting procedure?
Uh, motion, but I have a time.
Right, and I'll second it with the same.
Okay, except.
Great, um, when you, I'll go first, when, when you first mentioned that at the last uh meeting back in December. On a personal standpoint, I was like, wow, that's great, I have one less meeting a month that I have to worry about. But then I had some time to think about it, and I'm, I got a bit of feeling that if we do this, it's gonna bottle, it's gonna just bottle, connect things up, I don't know if I can get my kind of one meeting a month at this point.
Have similar thoughts, but my other thought was that the public comment portion of our meetings would then limit people once a month, and they'd have to wait, I'm feeling that the meetings would be longer, and I think that probably not fair to the public if they have something they need to talk about or want to get on record. They would have to wait one time a month and then wait a long period of time to get up and stuff, so I'm gonna, although, like Vic said, one less meeting a month on initially seemed like, wow, that's great, I do not think it's fair to the community, so I would rather go with the two a month.
Okay. Um.
I'd like to make the public comment, well.
Okay.
I don't quite understand why we would be switching to one meeting, um, I agree with the comments that can season just made. In the history of the village, as far as I know, we've always had two meetings per month, same goes for the town. I don't see why we should change it now, especially with the amount of work before us this year. That's the extent of my opinion.
Okay.
So.
If I may, yeah, fine. I, I would recommend that the um way to approach this is to have the first board be scheduled workshop, in which the board can have open discussions on the matters before us.
Okay.
And that workshop would not involve any uh actions on any matters uh before the board. That would give us a chance to understand the materials that will be circulated at the main meeting, the fourth Thursday. This would give us two weeks to basically examine documents, examine proposals, and consult with the uh various departments and commissions that were liaisoning.
Okay. So I'm assuming this is gonna be voted down, so can I have a motion in the seconds? Actually, uh, can I get a vote on this? On one meeting a month? No?
No.
No, no.
No.
Okay. Moving very long.
Right, you stopped it without the meeting.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's leave it alone, the village, right, right, well, the village of Woodbury holds regular meetings on the second and fourth Thursdays of each month, starting at seven thirty PM at village hall with all the rest of the minutia that I read before. And I'm motion in a second.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion and second to adopt the following procedures, following during the public comments sec- segment of the meetings? Public may speak only during public comments, or any time the village board permits for a period of five minutes. Time cannot be used to other members of the public. Comments are to be made to the village board only, not other members of the public or individual board members. Speakers will observe commonly, accept the rules and courtesy upon dignity and good taste when addressing the board in making comments. Your communication will be accepted, presented to the village clerk. And deviation must be determined by the village board. I can have a motion in a second to approve that, that's right.
Do we always have?
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, but I have a question, do we always have a five minute?
We always did, we never enforced it.
We always did one, sorry.
I said, do we always have a five minute rule?
Yes, we've always had a five minute rule, we have never actually enforced it, it's always been on the books, we just never law, so.
It's gonna be our policy, you know, it's just.
Yes, I never, I've never, whoever the mayor is to enforce it, but I don't care, it won't be. So motion in a second, I have, all in favor?
All right, yeah, I, as long as it's been on, it's on the books, then that's fine.
Do the question before we vote, that might just be something maybe you wanna talk about a public court job, well. About my, the time of the public comment.
No, I, I think that, why, you want shortening, you wanna make it a firm five, we could say.
I put it short.
Uh, I'm not, I'm allowing them to talk as long as they want now, so I don't really know if I need to add on books. But Jimmy, you've never been stopped by me, right?
Not yet.
Not yet. It could be, it could be.
It's the first time for everything, Jimmy.
I know, warming up.
All right, let's try that again, can I get a motion in a second to? I already have a motion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Yeah, all right, all right. Secure policy, can I have a motion in second to approve the following security policy as president? And it's a bunch of pages, and that's enough. Do I have motion? I'll make a motion, second. All in favor?
Discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh. The way this is drafted, I am concerned, given the recent uh history of incremental um approvals of small contracts at the county, which brought a thirty thousand dollar contract to a million and a half, which the attorneys have said the way that their law is drafted allows that. I would like to have some time to have this examined in order to prevent that kind of incremental purchasing, uh, which really can drain the, the village treasury pretty quick and allows uh somewhat indiscriminate extensions of contracts.
Taking under advisement. I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye. Nay.
Nay. All right. Official undertaking, can I have a motion in second to approve the below form official undertaking of missing officers of the village pursuant to section eleven of the public officers law on the manner of execution and the sufficiency of the village's insurance company. Some undertaking will be administered to all elected officials upon the start of their elected term that handle funds on the path of the village of Woodbury. So whereas Andrew Jack Motta and Vic Correlli of the village of Woodbury, County Orange, New York, have been elected to the office of mayor, deputy mayor of the village of Woodbury, now therefore, he as affected or these gentleman as respected officers above the hereby under section of the village of Woodbury that he will faithfully perform and discharge the duties of the office to be promptly accounted for and paid over all months or properly received as a village officer in accordance with the law and the village does and shall maintain insurance coverage presently in the sum of three hundred thousand dollars. And as exemplifying its losses through the family or the offices, clerks, and employees covered under the preventive one of these, or through account property for all months, or properly received by virtue of their positions or employment, and through forthcoming or designated acts committed to the purpose of buying officers, clerks, and employees covered there. So can I have a motion in second to all that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Reorg's added way. Public hearing, more term waiver request, show up. New York State Railway, public hearing is being held at eighteen public comments and requests for relief from lawful law, that in twenty twenty-three, with the property looking to that three three one, three four, three seventeen, public hearing, the source will get time to our record on January twenty. And you are present, and the floor is yours.
I think I am present, I'm really sure, thank you very much. Good evening, I'm Todd Hall, I'm the director of public relations for the New York State Railway Authority, and I'm joined by my colleagues Adam Noyer, who means deputy general counsel, and Steve Botberg, who means the director of structural design. Good evening, Mayor, and village trustees, thank you very much for having us here tonight. Um, we are here because we submitted a petition for a hardship waiver from the village's municipal water moratorium. The power and maintenance facility has been in its current location for approximately seventy years since the thruway had been constructed. Thirty-five of those seventy years, they've been without potable water. Um, the facility is located at thirty three, one thirty four, three seventeen, you know, with the Woodbury, and the facility is um operated solely for the public good to facilitate higher operations in town with various sections of the thru. Uh, work performed from the facility includes rolling, and repeating and clearing the thruway of snow and ice, both of which enhance safety for the residents in this area and new shopping areas in the very commons, which, as we all know, is a very large economic driver in the area. The maintenance facility is accessible to our staff twenty-four hours a day, seven days to three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and staff around the clock during the winter months. The facility has more than thirty full-time employees. Currently, because of lack of potable water, they have experienced any unnecessary and extraordinary hardship. Employees at the facility are provided with bottled water and that for drinking.
Shoot, yeah.
And the facility has a disinfecting system so that the water can be used only for hand washing and dishwashing. In contrast, with their other thirty maintenance sections, employees of the Harrowman Maintenance Facility are not permitted because of the quality of water to shower. During the snow and icing, we have people working sixteen-hour shifts, and during these really long demanding shifts, they cannot shower, they're often filthy, dealing with a lot of material, and is often helping to go home to be able to shower. Providing bottled water and using a disinfecting system, they are not long-term viable and sustainable approaches for operating the facility, especially with clean, well-regulated municipal water, so close. The village's moratorium exempts village of Woodbury and town of Woodbury projects rightfully showing that government work is important and should continue unimpeded. The authority also provides essential government work comparable to a village and a town. We believe that the village's failure to grant a waiver will cause the authority to continue extraordinary hardship because the facility employees will not have potable water to drink, wash, or shower. The village's random waiver will not have an adverse effect upon goals or objectives of the village to protect and preserve water resources of the village. The water use estimated in our petition waiver is based on high level of use usually during winter months while trucking new water. Um, the waiver is sought for an action which is harmonious with neighboring uses and community economic effort. The facility is an integral part of the community and for the residents who are employed by the authority and working at the facility. The people working at the maintenance facility are providing a valuable safety service to the community and giving access to potable water. Our hardship is not to result in delays in action or action by the authority, and it has not been self-created. Will water is not a viable source, and the village has denied us access to or through municipal water supply. In March of twenty sixteen, Orange County Department of Health recommended that the facility connect to municipal water supply as soon as possible. And since that time, the authority sought a resolution, uh, the council resolution with the village. And um, I have two letters from the Department of Health, and I'm not sure whether submitted with our petition, one is from March thirty-first, twenty sixteen, and May twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen, um, can I bring them up after?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much. There are no other viable reasonable alternatives to get potable water to the town. But connection other than through the Woodbury Commons is not viable, given the distance in construction requirements to access municipal water from another location. Should a waiver be granted, we are empowered to working with the village to draw up an agreement among the thruway authority, the village of Woodbury, and Woodbury Commons to provide potable water for our Harrowman Maintenance Facility. This approach will ensure that the water is metered, the authority, the authority pays for water inclusion, and the village has the oversight necessary to meet the village's requirements and needs. Connecting through the commons is the least disruptive approach to getting water to the people at the Harrowman Maintenance Facility. This connection will be fully funded by the authority. All expenses will be paid by the authorities, and they will not give out a traffic and immunity because all connections will be made under that. I thank you very much, this opportunity to come for the, for you and the board to um consider the waiver and provide free water to the men and women who work in our facility. Thank you. Thank you.
The members have stated, just in case there's any questions. Any questions on the board? Mr. Rep.?
I have a couple of brief questions for you, just to clarify what we're doing here. The first one is, is this service going to also include fire access, fire service access? Is it that? Is it sized for that or not?
You mean outside the use of our?
Yeah. Is there going to be, is it, is it going to be designed to provide fire service to the facility? That is the, the water quantity?
You know. I believe it was, but I was not involved in that. So that's. You'd be happy to get that too.
Yeah.
We can certainly do that. The usage that Todd had talked about, and I forget the.
About seven thousand.
Seven thousand gallons. And now we're going to have to use, right, it's mostly during winter months, truck washing. I know that we were doing a pressure test back in the early phases of design on this to see and, and determine whether or not we had that capability. That was seven years ago and I don't recall off the top of my head what that answer was.
You can answer my question. That's, that's fine.
So, thank you.
If I may, I, I, on your, your presentation here, you said that your estimated usage is five to seven thousand gallons a day and you then divided that into twenty-four hours and sixty minutes. What I would like to know is, have number one, have this, has this number been validated against the fixture count as is usually divided for these kinds of things?
Those numbers were generated on a similar size maintenance facility that we have. Most of our sizes are standard throughout the state and it is based on non-nusage at our facilities. Yes.
And then the, the last thing I'd like to know is of that, a lot of, it sounds like a lot of the water is going to truck, truck washing. The question is, why isn't it possible to isolate the non-potable water requirements of the industrial side of your operation from the potable water side, thereby reducing the demand on the village's water?
I can answer that one partially. One has to do with the pressure that's generated from the well. Not enough pressure to actually generate sustained truck washing functions. So I believe that is why that portion of our usage is, is critical to us is we can't run our pump that long to wash a truck with the, with the poor quality of water because we can't draw that line.
But is there any reason that you can't provide some water storage to cover those peak needs?
That could be considered, yes.
Do you have an engineer's report on the flow conditions that this would produce?
In the office, I believe we do.
Can we have that submitted to the board please? Those are my questions.
Anyone else on board?
You have a question. The, the five to seven thousand gallons that you projected is used, is that an accurate projection? Because you just stated that the winter months are used more than the summer months. Is that an average of a year round?
No, that is, that is the maximum during maximum use story.
That's the max, the five to seven is the maximum.
Yes, and normal usage in the summer will be.
What's your annual? What's your annual projection?
It really depends on how much is used in the facility. And I can vary depending on whether you like, whether or not you need more truck washing, because the staff included trucks, the number of staff that is at the facility around the clock, depending again upon. So that, that's why we, we provided that.
What, when I look at five to seven and I take six, that looks like, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand a month.
It's a lot of water.
That's a lot of work.
And that, that, so that is, we wanted to provide the, the village what the, the most people see coming out of this facility. Generally, it is not that high. It really is a stone.
Five hundred gallons.
A day.
That, that's a lot of stuff.
I'd say, I mean, when we get into the winter months, it would ramp up unless we use water storage.
What does, what does your other facilities use on an annual basis?
These numbers are based on the other facilities. They're all, they're all.
Well, you're telling me five to seven, but that's at peak. So on an annual basis, do we have a number from the other facilities?
I just have an annual number.
Let me provide that perhaps.
Yeah, why would you think of that?
And get more information.
Can I just follow up? This is, I presume, has to do with water quality. Depending what, what the water quality tests were showing, is this a salt situation?
So this was, the water was contaminated from the early nineties from the New York. When.
It's inherently, that's what happened.
Thank you.
I mean, I guess for me, I'd like to hear Mickey's opinion on.
Thank you. I'm good. Uh, any other questions on the board? You gentlemen can have a seat. Okay, Kelly, why don't you just give us? Because this has been before the board before, but now it's a hardship.
That is a hardship waiver. It's become before the board created late. I did respond on the boards. They have twice to the New York State thruway authority that the board is not interested in allowing it to tie in. Rude was very common and potential precedent that that might set, really how those agreements would work. But they have presented their letter which steps towards argument pursuant to the requirement of the waiver request and what they would be arguing. And I did just want to note that this has not yet been reviewed by your village chairman.
I know. I've already spoken to the guy and I pretty much told him that we're going to probably carry this over to the next meeting. We'll get that back. Uh, Mickey Phillips, you want to weigh in?
Uh, no.
Okay, where you go. All right, anyone else in public? Anyone in the public who should speak on this who is present here now, guys? Go to voting.
My name is Thomas Powell. I live on Oakland Avenue, right by the Woodbury Commons. As Mickey tell you, every time there's more development up by the high school, water pressure goes down in my development, in my area, which is Oakland Avenue, short walk from Woodbury Commons. Uh, I don't understand why they can't, with all the property they have over there, why they can't sink their own well and draw water like other town, other areas do, or businesses does. All right, and question, what is being done with the wastewater coming off the trucks? Okay, where does that, is that being treated or is that being dumped into the ramp or river? That's a good question for the people in, in, in New Jersey and South. All right, uh, but I'm concerned about every time that they're going to wash a truck, the water pressure in my house drops, all right? And I'm not knocking my neighbors, but they had holidays and some of them, it's rumored that they run water all the time. I don't know. But all I know is that it's not a holiday anymore and my water pressure's great this week. All right, so, you know, I, I don't understand why they're here when you got all your property, your own property. How many other facilities do you have that are on municipal water? Are they on well, on their own wells? Or are they, are all your facilities on what, on municipal water? You're in here asking for, you know, us to.
Tommy, you want to direct your questions?
They're asking us to give them water and when we as the first responder ask for something from them, it never happens. So I say no.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the public?
Chris, right here. I'll, I'll answer some of his questions too. Ninety-nine percent of the water in that public waste water is charged. That's correct. That's where the water comes from. I don't, I use down, down rot. So that's for a couple, a couple of things. One, trustee programs look to my track. This is not just a domestic waterfall or individual building. You do require all requirements, which will triple or quadruple the, the, the amount of water you needed in case provided over there. Secondly, I strongly suggest the village board not to allow them to act into another customer. You're creating a sub-water district. If there's water quality issues, water quality, it's completely responsible. It's a mess. You do not want to do that. If you're going to serve somebody, you serve them on their own path individually, on their own line. Number three, talking about letters in the D O H from seven, eight, nine years ago, this does not drive to the occasion of a hardship right now in an emergency situation. We've been talking about this for nine years. It's not an emergency. That's not a hardship. And the last point I want to make is the village is very, very restricted water supplies at the moment. Adding commercial road to that will only make the residential issue worse. And I strongly recommend, I'm not there anymore, but I strongly recommend the board to not grant this waiver for all the reasons. And you really, really do not want to have a sub-customer, a sub-customer. If you're going to create a problem, you don't want.
Anyone else in the public who is joining us here?
Eric Hunter. Most of the properties that are businesses that are on, I'm going to say this outside of seventeen, where the thruway is, they all get their water impairment. No one has crossed that road to get water from the Woodbury. Just a thought that maybe the applicant might want to build in the village of Harriman and see what they can do with providing water and a water line that can come over Route thirty-two and go down to their property. That's just a thought. I'm familiar with the village of Harriman Water Department, so think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else who's joining us here?
Don Kelly, Heather Mills. Thank you, Chris, for clarifying a lot. I respect you for that. You know, just one thing I heard in their comments was at first they started out by saying potable water for showers and drinking, and then it shifted over to truck washing. So I heard two different stories in this whole conversation and being I used to run truck out on the thruway for a long period of time, I know how much water they use to do truck washing in the middle of the winter. And my one question is we are on water restrictions every summer. They start using a lot of water of us. What is that going to do to us in the summer? Do we really have the capacity to allow somebody else to tap into our wells? We have enough building coming on right now. You know, we can't water our gardens in the summer. What are we going to stop taking showers in the summer too? Stop. When do we stop?
Thank you, John. Anyone else who's joining us here in person? Once or twice? Anyone who's doing this virtually? Keep now, not holding these. Well, since, as I said earlier, we have not gotten anything back from our engineering firm, so I would like to hold over the public hearing till our next meeting. So move. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
That's a gentleman. Next, three minutes to twenty-five. Thank you. All right, moving on to public comment on gender items only. Ladies and gentlemen, the, the agenda is provided in the back. Keep now on any item on any gender for the seating. Going once. Right there. Initiative business. Can I motion in a second? We start the seated minutes of the meeting until December fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Twenty fourteen, twenty twenty-four.
Make the motion.
Make a motion. Do I have a second?
December fourteenth.
September twenty-eight.
September twenty-eight.
Okay, September twenty-eight. I have motion in second then. I have motion pursued second by ready. Uh, since the other two questions were not there, I guess it's. All right, three zero. The Water Department plan, please read abstract fourteen.
Okay, okay, thank you. We have two, three, two, four, one, hundred and eighty, two, three, two, four, one, hundred and forty there. And so eight hundred, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and nine cents.
And I have motion in second to approve abstract fourteen as read.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jim, Matt?
I didn't have a chance to review it. It was made available two days ago.
And that may be a problem now?
Because that's what I'm here to do is to review abstracts among other things.
Okay. Fire department equipment request. Can I motion? All right. Fire department equipment request. I have motion in second through the application for junior management shift to Woodguard Fire Department chief Sean Carson.
Got it.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
There's no old business time, new business. Okay. Fire department equipment. I have motion in second to approve the purchase and place some of the LED headwinds. The amount of two thousand dollars for rated five to forty.
Motion.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Is this the actual amount, is it not to exceed two thousand based on the actual invoice of the material?
Now, that's the actual invoice. It's two thousand dollars.
Exactly two thousand. Do we have the invoice? Is that how you know it's two thousand?
Do we have the invoice?
If it wasn't attached to the fire department equipment request, you usually say across something because sometimes there are shipping charges, which you did not know ahead of time. So you're just including the purchase of the actual items at that cost. There are occasionally shipping charges that are added on that, because I don't know if you do remember how that or not.
Okay. Thank you. Can I motion in a second? Discussing, all in favor? All right, resolution, electronic records as official records of the village. So as everybody knows, we have climate smart task force under our purview and we are looking for a way to reduce our footprint here in the village of Woodbury. And one of those needs that we're looking at is moving all paper to, instead of killing trees and breaking and everything else like that, just moving to an electronic way of doing all business here in the village of Woodbury. So I asked and Desiree Cotton obliged by finding a electronic records resolution somewhere in New York State. Queens, Barry? Yeah. Don't even know where it is. So can I motion in second? The resolution is provided for everybody. But I have motion in second to adopt the following resolution, secondly, adopt the electronic records as village of Woodbury's swarm of reputation for temporary and permanent retention of records. All in favor? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Sure.
The electronic records system historically has been subject to a lot of problems with theft or obsolescence or impermanence. And in the resolution, there is said that there's going to be, quote, backups. Is that backups of the physical records or just backups of the electronic records?
Would you like to answer that?
I would love to. Yes. So as some of you may know, I'm also president of the New York State Records Management Association. And we follow the strict guidelines that are dictated by state archives. In our particular municipality, we have a program called Laser Piece, which is an electronic content management software that has cloud backup. In addition, we back up to our server and we also back up to the flash drive that is stored in a fireproofed state. So we have three different backups to all electronic, uh, electronic documents that have been created. They're all in the format approved by the state archives, which is what we require to follow. In addition, they are per se conjunction with the state archives records retention schedule that we also. Thank you. So can I answer that?
All right, I have a motion in a second. Do I have it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. Next, I have a warrant request to waive public planning board application fees. So correspondence was received from supervisor Uchiani regarding a grant the town is working on for the animal shelter. So. So supervisor Luciani is requesting that the village raise a fee to support the planning or permit through the planning boards of the animal shelter needs its compliance needs. I don't think there was anything more to it than that. Right? Okay. Motion in a second to. Waive the application fees.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Sure.
Uh, I think the village has had some experience in terms of the application of zoning to other municipal governments on their property. I would request a written opinion from the village attorney as to whether the town is required to go to the planning board. For work performed on their property in their public capacity of this. This is a municipal operation. I would also like to get some clarification of whether the village will be providing for building code compliance. And where you go, there'll be a fee for that in village if they use the building, the village building inspector to be that compliance figure.
I have motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. That ends regular business of the village of Woodbury. It's on to our most, our favorite portion of the meeting program, public comments. So I saw it in the back row. Jimmy likes to go last. Anybody in the back row? Don Kelly, you're already been in the way.
Oh, I have to start again. Get your clock. Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
No disrespect to you at all.
As soon as you say that, that's exactly what's happening. It's disparate of that history.
Let's start off by saying. Need to get your act together.
Thanks. That's not disrespectful. Everybody.
I said this at the town board meeting. I'm gonna say it here. This board, the town board, need to learn how to get along. Okay? You all work for us. The town board's sitting here, village board's sitting here. You all work to the people of the village of this town. You need to work for us. Put your differences aside. If you can't, go lock yourselves in a room, sit there until you figure it out and then come out. Okay? You all work for us. I never saw this, this board before. I don't, can't see it now. But blah, 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 don't wanna. Alright. Let's go address the big issue in the village. Down the street. And I'm gonna say this now, I do not want to be voted by anybody unless they can be here in person. And that comes because somebody wants to quote me in the paper and doesn't wanna show their face here. Okay, and we all know about that because it should've. The issue is the garage down the street. The junkyard, the garage, the repair shop, the whatever else it's been called, okay? Looks like crap. It's been blasted all over the internet. We all know it looks like crap, okay? It's making this village look like garbage. Needs to be cleaned up. I know there was a thirty day. Notice put out, thank you, okay? Thirty day notice is not gonna clean this issue up today. Miraculously, before the village board meeting and the co, co-meeting tonight, all the cars disappeared. Guess what? Don't work because by the end of the week, they're all gonna be parked there again. Okay? Are the, are the leaking oil or the leaking air freeze or leaking anything else into the stream? Nobody knows. Okay? What's gonna be done about it? First question. Who's gonna be held accountable for it? And who's gonna be holding him accountable for it? Okay? Is our building inspector? Who, what, where? Anybody have any answers? What are we gonna do about it? Mr. Mayor?
I'm on it.
Where is?
I'm on it.
You're on.
I'm on it.
But it's not being done.
It certainly has been.
And you know what?
It's been improved.
They don't, there, they don't care. That's the problem. They don't care. We got sold out, okay? That's all I'm gonna say. Let's clean it up, okay?
Thanks, John. Anyone else in the back row? Next, next row. Next row after that. You know what? Anybody just walk out this way.
Jimmy, you wanna go first or for me?
I'll go.
Go for it, Jimmy.
Jimmy, any kind of notes? It's incredible. It is, it's incredible. I mean. I'm bored here, village bored. And again, you know, it is, I, I hope you guys work together and work with people there. I imagine we hashed the actual argument because basically it's nothing to canis. The whole issue with canis is, you know what? We got blindsided with the honor roll of. The canis users. We walk in here trying to defend. Our town and village and they came in here with, you know, I, I understand there aren't the legitimate ones. But with everything going on here, again, it was wow. It's the next time, Sue, next time you plan a family vacation, invite me and outside, listen to home, discuss where you should go. Or Vic, when you do a budget, invite me over so I can help you plan because I know better than you. That's what I felt like. I'm sitting here and just like, wow. It, it would've been different if you guys reached out to the specialists. Hey, talk to them. But we got other people living in other areas. I didn't hear a Woodbury citizen here saying, I want this. Put it next door to me. And that, that was like, wow, this is crazy. And they, you know, between the voice on and internet, between what is in the paper. Were the bad guys because we don't understand. Because you know what? Hey, I don't want, next to my family, I'm wrong. And that was just really insulting. I mean, is that what normally happens? Anyone could show up at a meeting and voice their opinion, is that? Or it was just this one case and this one topic? It was, you know what? You don't live here, you don't speak what's going on. I mean, I, I'm guessing, you know what? The, the little damage to Woodbury pharmacy. I hope that's not related. I hope, you know, between the, you know, try to drive us, just all the incidents. You know, it, it was, it was insulting for somebody to come to my house and tell me how it should be. Thank you.
Anyone else who's joining us if I'm wishing to speak?
Maria Hunter. It literally a meeting without me standing alongside Jimmy. Jimmy and I both love where we live. I don't know how many years you've been here. I'm gonna be here forty-five years soon. Moved up into Monroe in seventy-one. I've seen a lot of changes. I've been very active when we were just a town. Before my second child was born, so I know a lot. I've attended a lot. I understand part of it. I do my research. We have to, I just hope that every time I come to a village board meeting, it's not gonna always be a three, two, with the abstract. Get to the classes and my mom has classes, get to learn what all your codes are for each department. Find out what you need to know. We can't wait and delay having bills to be paid. If the other three members who vote yes, one of them happens to be sick or on vacation, we're gonna have a stalemate. That's not fair to the residents who are not paying their bills to contractors, engineers, services. And then we're gonna start incurring penalties and fees. Trust me, I understand this. I work in another municipality. We don't pay our bills. We get penalties and we have to explain why we didn't pay our bill. I don't wanna see this happening. We can't do this. We have to move forward together as a team. You've been here long enough, Mr. Fryben, no disrespect to you. You understand because you used to stand at town board meetings and village board meetings and go line by line on budgets. So you understand what the budget is. You know what each department is. We have to move forward. One other thing. I see more meetings here. Congratulations to you. I do work under the town in Monroe. I wanna acknowledge her. I wanna thank the mayor for working on the garage issue. We talked about this in between. Being on a beautification, everyone has been on for seventy years now. I forget how many years I've been on a beautification, twenty years. We try to make Woodbury look good. I don't care if it's a town or village, Woodbury, try to make it look good. And that means all our residents and our businesses. Clean up your ass. That means everybody. I'm gonna go to the building department sometime this week after I sort things out, maybe next week, tomorrow's Friday, ready? There are businesses that have been approved by the planning board. These businesses are not following their approvals. That's disheartening. Planning board members, zoning board members, you stay here for hours reading your material, you make resolutions, you put things together. And then those people don't follow the rules what they were given. So we need to tighten that up and whether the town and village work together on that, but we need to come together. And last but not least. Superintendent, why, why, why excuse me, I'm gonna come up here. Thank you in your entire. Men and women, for all you've done with your dedication this year. Thank you for taking out the darkness from utility poles this week, keeping the snow and the rain, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's joined us? Alright. There you are.
Again, Tom Howe of Banan. You know, I, I came here, I think it was in November and I asked about, you know, some, uh, somebody going over and looking at Autumn Lane private section. Where as a first responder, as a first responder, I went there and. Have to maneuver an ambulance through a minefield. It's a disgrace. It should never be like that, alright? There's residents in there that need our service, my services. Because of their kids wheelchair bound or whatever, and we can't even get to them because of the minefield that's there. Then I come to find out somebody whispered in my ear today that during a snowstorm, our building department decided to go over and look at it. They had two months. Why didn't they wait for a snowstorm? Alright? Nothing. Around town, there's double poles, alright? Over a year and a half now.
They've been just. Long as I'm close, because I'll explain the zombie poles to you. The zombie poles, they've been there longer than a year and a half.
I know.
Okay. I have, they removed thirty-six of them sometime last year, but then they put up all new poles, so now we have more. Zombie poles. So you get, you lose.
Why do you have, why do you have a law on the books that says after thirty days it's supposed to be removed or you find it? Every time you, you stand here and you talk about more laws and more ordinances and stuff like that, nobody enforces. Alright, the, the, from Route seventeen all the way up to the Cornwall line, Route thirty-two looks like a shit hole, excuse my flat. Alright, and then if you go from the New York State thruway, they left already, from the New York State thruway up to the Monroe border. Alright, it's another dump, alright? Because nobody cleans up the thruways here, ask people water. They can't even pick up the garbage on the side of their. So-called maintenance roadway that they're supposed to take care of. Alright, the zombie poles are another thing. Alright, um. And then, and then at the last meeting, you guys talked, or maybe last, I'm not even right to that, but you talked about the Palaya. And how the new owners wanted to so, so, so much stuff there and you're all behind them, but. There's a place called Rushmore in this town that wants to do stuff and everybody's like turning a blind eye to them. They're here, they, they've been here. Why can't we support the businesses that are here now instead of trying to reach out, bend over backwards and go for the ones that are. Coming in or allegedly coming in. Alright, and I just. I just gotta, I don't understand how, what is, what our building department, is there a code enforcement officer? And who is it?
Yes, there's a code enforcement.
Does he have, does he have two eyes? It's blind, does he have a dog that will, that tries to run in the park? I got, I got.
There's no need to insult anyone. Okay, there's no need to insult anyone.
Well, you know.
Ultimately, I'm not saying I can insult anybody, my preference.
Yeah.
So let's not go there.
Alright, and. What is happening behind the, uh, walk to the right, if you look at the ambulance building, walk to the right. All the way into, uh, wetlands back there. Some kind of building going on. I mean, that's going back to, you don't want me to insult anybody, but no. Wetlands, we built out.
Anyone else here wishing to speak? Anyone who's joining us publicly?
So I'm Kate Luciani, very talented supervisor and employed with Sandy, certainly only town council member. You're into the wild though. We're just all here for your guys' first meeting. We wanna congratulate you all. We wanna congratulate you, Major Chakavata. We wanted to congratulate you, trustee Barrow, trustee Fryben, and we look forward to working with you soon. Trustee Suriella and trustee Peroni. We have worked with you in the past and we're looking forward to, you know, working together, communicating. You know, all trying to move Woodbury together. I know a lot of people have said things that they've heard John and heard people make comments and things like that and. You know, we've been trying very hard. We're really excited to have this new team with me on this board. You know, um, one thing that since being on the town board these past few weeks. We've been working with a lot of the people in our departments and trying to make things go back to normal peace, you know, and that's what we're supposed to have here in Woodbury. A lot of us are community servants. You know, Sandy works at the food pantry. We're, we are Woodbury. Brandon does a lot of community service and that's what's in our hearts. I know a lot of you, Andrew, you and I, we worked on that bench, you know, for Colleen outside. This is how we all got involved. We got involved, we knew each other, we were friends with each other. We wanted to see different things in Woodbury. We wanted to keep. Our area just more beautiful, you know, and that's how I met Maria on the beautification committee because I tell people all the time, they're willing to the workforce. You put her out to do something, she will do it. She's ripped roots out that I couldn't even believe that she'd do. You know, that's what we have here in Woodbury and all this stuff, that thing going on and all this animosity and whatever, division. You know, like everybody else has, has to end because when it comes down to us, we all have the same reason of what we wanna do here in Woodbury. We just need to remember that. So we were all voted in, we were voted in by all the people sitting here, all the people that are watching, all the people that are around. They voted us in because they want us to do the right thing. So we're looking forward to starting a new page, working with you guys and moving Woodbury forward. So I just wanna congratulate you. We would like to congratulate you and thank you for letting us speak.
Congratulate, is it black? Anyone else who's joined us? In person? Anyone join us virtually?
Somebody.
You got a hand over. Demaya?
Yes, hi. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Sorry, I couldn't join in person. Um, I just wanted to address again, um, the gentleman, you know, we're not trying to come into your town and tell you what to do. We actually are trying to have you tell us what to do and work with you guys. I've been open for a delivery service, um, in New York State for two weeks now and I have been delivering inside of Woodbury. There are people that's calling that, you know, are watching, that sees, um, what's going on, that is just not present at the town hall meetings that actually. There are people that's calling that, you know, are watching, that sees, um, what's going on, that is just not present at the town hall meetings, that actually would like us there. So it is inaccurate when you say that, um, there's no one that wants it in the town of Woodbury, there is. Um, we're not trying to intrude, and again, like the mayor has said, you guys opted in whether it was on purpose or not, but the town has opted in. And all we're trying to do is work with the town so that everyone can feel comfortable and everyone can be happy. Um, so again, we're not here to destroy your town, we're here to help, we're here to educate and work with the town so that everyone can have a clear understanding of how things are working and feel comfortable still in their neighborhood.
That's it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Samaya. Anyone else who's joined us virtually? Oh, it's a chat, right?
The hands.
Go ahead.
Claudia has a hand, is that?
Alright, not hearing any of the comments, I'm going for comments, starting, watch, I'm going to want to comment, starting with, uh, starting with Mickey Phillips. Thank you, bye. Rob Wyatt?
I'm going to be, thank you.
Pressure, Muckel?
Uh, this is my first meeting back since I was out on medical leave, after the, and since the election. So I just want to thank everybody on this side who reached out to check on me and see how I was doing, and I thank the previous medical board for sending flowers and me amazing cookies and fruit that you sent, kept me eating while I was recovering. Rob did not check on me at all. Um, kind of want to congratulate everyone.
Chief Watson, you here?
Nothing. Thank you.
Samantha, you want to listen to my interview? Thank you, Kelly?
I have nothing.
Alright. Fourth comment, uh, trustee Pramak.
Thank you, um, again, I appreciate, actually, the, the nice turnout tonight, the participation by the public is really important to making the village work. I also want to thank the town board for coming down, and I, I want to commit that you have my personal support and commitment to making this work between us all. Uh, and I'd also like to thank Desri, because in this, you, she, she came in, Habo, to help me get oriented and to try and catch up with the, the paperwork involved here, thank you very much. And then finally, I wanted to, uh, comment, uh, Mr. Wigan, the work that was done by your guys over this past week with the snow was really incredible, at least in my neighborhood. I don't know how you did it, but we were actually the only place that you could, once you, once you left the town, you were in trouble, and the, the staff there, the bowels, really did a great job, thank you.
I'll second that. I was very, like, when I went out, I was like, wow, these roads are fabulous.
That's it? Yes, alright, trustee Perelli?
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I want to wish everybody, I haven't seen already, a happy new year. Uh, one thing I want to talk about is the, we have an upcoming, I think I mentioned the last meeting, an upcoming fundraiser. Uh, Woodbury Community Association is holding its annual art dance fundraiser on Saturday, February tenth, by Brett Faulkner. Uh, this is a great night out, it, it's a lot of fun. Uh, all the profits, all the proceeds from the fundraiser goes to the American Heart Association, and over the years, our organization has raised over thirty thousand dollars for the art association, so. Uh, I know flyers have been sent out, they're, they're on the, uh, they're on Facebook someplace, uh, they've been put up in some of the local stores and delis in town. So I'd like to see you guys there, if you can make it, it's a good night, a lot of fun, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's why I'm here.
Trustee Suriello?
I'd just like to congratulate Jim and Matt, and Mayor, um, thank you to the town board for coming out. I just came to a meeting, but it was my husband's birthday, I didn't want to count, but that wasn't, that wasn't going to fly that night, um, and, um.
Trustee Babro?
Wait, wait.
Oh. Are you allowed for that?
Congrats, but that's what I'm saying.
Okay, trustee Babro?
Alright. Uh, good evening, everybody, and thank you all for being here, like to wish a happy belated new year to everyone as well. And, um, before I continue, I'd like to thank, uh, everybody who helped me get and includes Kristen Borlos, my family, um, especially my mom, Rhonda, and my twin Andrew. Um, and then a happy birthday to my dad, Jim Babro, today's his birthday. And, um, I'm also respectfully grateful, um, for all the support I received from friends and colleagues throughout the past year, all the advice, all the campaigning, all that, I mean, I was yeah, political here, but I just want to reflect on that, and, um, I'd also like to thank all the town and village officials for all their work during the snowstorm. You guys did a phenomenal job, and I also look forward to working with all the folks on the town side, and, uh, once again, congratulations on your elections, congratulations to Mr. Mayor and Jim on your elections as well. And I'd like to thank all the, um, past public employees for their public service as well. And, um, I'm looking forward to working with all, and all the staff, Desiree, Jessica, Kelly, everything, but that's all, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so prepared for the worst, pray for the best, we had, we were expecting to be knocked out from this secondary storm. But once again, because we have some of the best department heads in Orange County, uh, Mother Nature responded, and we responded back. So I just want to give a kuzab to Mickey Phillips and Rob Wyatt, along with our volunteers of the Woodbury Ambulance and the Fire Department, as well as the Woodbury Police Department and the building grounds for the town. They did a phenomenal job keeping our roads safe, um, if the amount of preparation work that went into just the second storm, not the snowstorm, but the second storm, making sure all the catch basins were clear, and making sure that residents were clearing out their own catch basins or their drains on their own properties, which is usually a bigger issue. So you guys did an amazing job, once again, I just want to thank you all. Uh, Muckel, King Day? It's Monday?
Yeah.
Sunday, right?
Yeah.
So, in preparation for that, uh, I wanted to make mention of it. So Muckel King is across when we start that, so someone may have mentioned that Muckel King Day is Monday, across the United States, Dr. King is best known for advancing civil rights through nonviolent activism. Although many great quotes can be attributed to Dr. King, one of my favorites is, we may all have come on different ships, but we are in the same boat now. Muckel King's junior's words have spoken with the hope their future for African-Americans will be brighter, but moreover, that they will find it. It strains the quality of equality that is that everything we're doing deserves. At the same time, Dr. King's words inspired the entire human race to strive for harmony among all people. His tragic death shocked the nation, but his words and his dedication to equality continues to this day. And they continue to inspire generations of young and old, and even old people like myself. So with that in mind, I have a motion in a second to adjourn this meeting. Motion. All in favor?
Alright, very much.
Thanks.
Alright, next meeting's January twenty-fifth, one point four, until then, Woodbury, you get yourselves and each other. I'm here, yeah.